8.4. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Emeryville granting a waiver for greenway access fee of $50,000 for the Broken Rack. Charlie?
Yes, give me a second here to get the plans up on the screen. Mayor Asher and members of the City Council, you have before you a resolution to grant a waiver for the greenway access fee of $50,000 for the Broken Rack project on Pellidou Street. Broken Rack is an existing pool hall and bar that's located at the public market, and they're planning to relocate to this building on Pellidou Street. On September 26th, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the use at this location. The applicant plans to apply for a sidewalk café permit to have outdoor seating along the greenway once the city completes construction of this segment of the greenway between Powell Street and Stanford Avenue. And that would involve the building having access to the greenway. The planning regulations require a minor conditional use permit for access from any private property from a city park or greenway. The applicant has submitted an application for this minor CUP on November 25th. That application is now pending for staff-level approval. The regulations also require that as a condition of gaining this access from a city park or greenway, that the owner of the private property make a one-time lump sum contribution to the citywide park fund in an amount equal to the value of the access as determined by an appraisal. Such an appraisal was done, and the value of the access was determined to be $50,000. The regulations also state that this fee can be waived or reduced if the property owner is required to construct or make improvements to the greenway, and/or if the City Council determines that the value of the access to the city outweighs the value of the access to the applicant. When the Planning Commission approved the use permit for the Broken Rack at this location, they included a condition that requires the applicant to pay the cost of construction and materials for an outdoor seating area in the greenway adjacent to their building. And this would be required whether or not they are allowed greenway access, whether or not they have outdoor seating. The cost of that, the materials and staff time, was subsequently estimated at $13,500. The applicant has paid the $13,500. They paid it on November 25th, and it has been deposited into this project account. The applicant is now requesting that the City Council waive the access fee of $50,000. As I said, the Council can waive or reduce the fee if you determine that the benefit of the access to the city outweighs the benefit of the access to the applicant. I just want to draw your attention to this drawing, which should be on the screen before you. Just to orient you, north is to the left. That's where Powell Street is over here. Stanford Avenue is to the right. Pellidou Street is at the bottom here. That's the west. And then Hollis Street to the east is up at the top. This segment of the greenway goes from the corner of Powell and Hollis down to the corner of Stanford and Pellidou. It's all been designed. It should be constructed within the next year. The city's design includes this so-called outdoor living room area here with festoon lighting and so forth. The area that the Broken Rack has paid the $13,500 to install pavers is over on this side. It sort of mirrors where the living room is to be. That was part of the original city design. In the original city design, this area of outdoor pavers was just to be landscaping, just grass. And there were also included these screen wall, these green screens, that really were intended to hide the building, because it's nothing but an ugly blank wall right now. So this access would allow for doors and windows in this area, and then the subsequent sidewalk café permit would allow them to have outdoor seating in this paved area. But as I said, regardless of whether this access is approved, or whether the sidewalk café permit is approved, there still will be this paved area right here that they have already paid for. And of course, the Broken Rack building itself is right here. Staff believes that the finding can be made to waive the fee, and we recommend that the Council consider waiving this $50,000 fee. The presence of a sidewalk café and outdoor seating along the stretch of the greenway, we believe, would promote an additional reason for residents to gather and spend time on the greenway. As you may know, when this section of the greenway was designed, there was a community input process. There were workshops. There was a lot of internal staff discussion, as well as presentations to the Council. And one of the questions that kept coming up is, well, we're designing this lovely little outdoor living room here, but why would anybody ever want to go there? And we were sort of hoping that something might come along that would encourage people to actually congregate here, because if there wasn't any active use in this area, there really isn't much reason to hang out here. We believe that this use provides that reason, and is a benefit to the city, and therefore justifies waiving this fee. If the Council wishes not to waive the full access fee, we would suggest that you at least consider reducing the $50,000 by the $13,500 that they've already paid, which would bring it down to $36,500. Alternatively, you might want to split the difference and waive a portion of it, but not all of it, and therefore require them to pay, say, $25,000 or $15,000. But again, staff's recommendation is that the entire fee be waived. I'd just like to note that just prior to this meeting, I was reviewing the video of the joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting that you had back in October of 2012, when you were reviewing the proposed new planning regulations. I'm sure you remember that was a very long meeting, and a lot of issues were discussed. One of the issues that was discussed at some length was the proposed provision about access to private property from city greenways. And it was interesting to review that discussion. It was somewhat inconclusive at that point, but the general sentiment that I was hearing... Well, first, the staff recommendation at that point was that it be a major conditional use permit for access to the greenway, meaning Planning Commission approval, and that a fee be required. And there was no provision for waiving it. Just there would be a fee based on the value of the access, and it would have to go to the Planning Commission for approval. The sentiment of your discussion with the Planning Commission was that you really wanted to encourage this access. And you talked about maybe not even requiring a permit at all, or maybe not even requiring a fee at all. And subsequently, what ended up happening at staff's discussion was that it was reduced from a major conditional use permit to a minor conditional use permit, and a provision was added that the fee could be waived if the Council felt that it was of more value to the city than to the applicant. And so that's what ultimately got adopted into the code. And in retrospect, and upon reviewing that discussion, I personally feel that this is exactly the kind of use that the Commission and Council had in mind when you were talking about a use that would be a benefit to the city, that would justify waiving the fee. And it was sort of with that in mind, which was why staff feels that this is in sync with, at least what you're thinking appeared to be at that time, the kind of thing that would justify waiving the access fee. So that is our recommendation, and that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant, Marilyn Boucher, is also here and would like to address you.
Okay. Hey, Charlie, I just have a quick question. The applicant's not the owner of the property?
That's correct.
That's right. Okay. And it's a 10-year lease, if I remember correctly?
Question.
Okay.
Nora, you said you had a question?
Yeah, Charlie, I have a question. I happen to agree with you. I think this is a wonderful use, and it'll just really make that whole segment of the greenway come alive. But am I to understand that this public right-of-way here, it will be under the sidewalk café ordinance, which means that every year we have an opportunity to review whether it's being maintained in a proper fashion, whether the use has changed, the ownership has changed. What I'm looking for here, it's a wonderful use, but I'm looking for protection for the city and the people in the city. If circumstances should change, if it's not maintained, or if there's any kind of police action required, we want to have the ability to go in there and remove that permit. So do we have that?
Well, let me clarify. This is a little confusing. There's actually three separate permits we're talking about here. One is the use permit for the Broken Rack, which has already been approved by the Planning Commission, which is for the use in the building. The second thing is the minor conditional use permit that's approved at a staff level for the access from the building to the greenway. And that has no time limit on it. And the sidewalk café permit is a third permit. That's a third and separate permit that would allow the outdoor seating on the greenway. And that does get renewed every year. And that can be just not renewed if it's not being done properly. But there's one other thing I want to mention. In the provisions in the code about the minor use permit for the access, there is a section that talks about the kind of conditions of approval that can be put on that permit. And one that is explicitly stated is that it can be limited to only certain uses. So for example, in this case, it could be stipulated in this minor use permit that this permit for access to the greenway only applies to the Broken Rack or a similar use.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for.
We could certainly put that condition on this minor conditional use permit.
And the city would have the ability, would the outdoor café thing take precedent over the minor conditional use?
Well, no, not exactly. They're sort of... They're kind of mutually exclusive. One allows them to have the doors onto the greenway. It just allows them to have the doors and the windows that access onto the greenway. That's what the minor use permit does. Then the sidewalk café permit is for the stuff that they actually put out on the greenway.
Okay.
And that's the one that has to be renewed every year.
All right.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I guess both.
Should we hear from the applicant?
Yeah.
First? Let's hear from the applicant.
Okay. Hi, I'm Marilyn Boucher, and this is my husband, Wayne. We are the owners of the Broken Rack, which has been in business at the public market for 15 years. We're a pool hall, a neighborhood sports bar and grill, and we're a venue for corporate and personal private events. We've lasted this long. We made it through the dot-com burst, for those of you who still remember that, this most recent major recession. And we've seen a lot of businesses come and go, as in go out of business at the market while we've stayed. We think we've survived because we offer services that the community wants and needs, and also because we have a very loyal customer base. We are a business that thrives on regulars. They're both pool players and people who live and work in the neighborhood. We're that place where people know your name. Our staff knows a lot of our customers. Our customers know our staff. Our customers get to know each other. I think that character of that business, along with the fact that we will offer greenway users several options, recreation, food, drink, but that sort of feeling about the business, which we intend to carry over to the new location, will even make us more appropriate for building that kind of community spot that I think everyone wants the greenway to be. You know, Emeryville has a lot of big development and big business, and that's a good thing. And the money that brings in obviously contributes to making this the attractive, well-run city that it is, where people want to live and where people want to do business. But we feel, and we hope you agree with us, that in the long run, the community's going to be healthier and more vital if small, independent, locally-owned businesses like ours can still find a place here. We feel like this ordinance probably had in mind those big businesses when it was conceived or drafted. We're not that. We're the proverbial mom and pop. We are asking you to waive this fee because frankly, we just can't pay it. I don't want you to think that we thought we could make this move on the cheap. We realized that we were looking at, to have enough space, we were looking at warehouse office spaces, that we would have to build a commercial kitchen and bar, and that that would be an expensive undertaking. What we did not anticipate, nor did the owner of this building anticipate when we first negotiated this arrangement, was that there would be a significant seismic retrofit involved. And the owner of the building had options. They could... The retrofit is triggered by the fact that we're a change of use. They could have looked for another tenant, which would not have been a change of use, and not have done the retrofit. In order to induce them to stay with us, and because we really felt that this was a great match of business and location, we had to agree to make a sizable, a major contribution to the cost of that seismic retrofit. That maxed out our budget. You know, we do not have room for that seismic retrofit, the cost of our tenants' improvements, and another assessment fee, whether it's $50,000, $36,500, $25,000, or even $15,000. We really feel that, you know, as Mr. Bryant stated, we've already paid $17,000 for these... $13,500 for the improvements and staff time. It would seem really cruel not to let us build doors out there after they've taken our money. But also, we've paid for the cost of the appraisal, so waiving the fee, I want to emphasize, would not leave the city in the red on this project in any way. It would, if we have to withdraw our request for access because of the cost. It would, as Mr. Bryant mentioned, leave one side of the greenway a long, tall, unbroken cement brick wall. And the other side would be the backs of buildings. I'm sure that greenways are not intended to be like, have people in them like water in a pipe that will keep them walled off from the surroundings. I think we're really suited to bring people... We're used where people will bring to the greenway. The people who want to use the greenway will find things to do there. And conversely, our pool players, who I'm sure many have, the greenway is not on their radar whatsoever, if it's there, and they're there, they're going to be pulled out into the greenway, enjoy it, appreciate it, and it will increase use in that way. So I think that granting us our request to waive the fee and allowing our access to go ahead would be a win-win situation, to use the overused phrase. It will make the greenway better, certainly help us make our business stronger. So we thank you for considering our request.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I guess I can relate to your situation, because you're making improvements, and those improvements will benefit somebody else, because you don't own the building. So I guess I can understand that. I don't know if there's a way that we can postpone, you know, if the property is sold, that do something 10 years down when your lease is renegotiated with the owner? Because I can, as I said, I appreciate you putting $50,000 up for this. And really, I mean, you are getting a direct benefit, but the owner's going to get a better, a larger portion of that benefit, of that improvement. So I don't, in some ways, I don't feel it's fair for you to pay for that $50,000, but I don't know how to structure that deal.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea, Charlie?
Well, if we include a condition, as I suggested, in the minor conditional use permit, that this access only applies to the Broken Rack or a similar use.
Okay.
Right.
Then in the future, if the building transforms into some other use, they won't have greenway access. They'll have to come back and request it again.
I would support that, yeah.
And then they'd have to, you know, pay whatever the fee at that time was determined to be.
Yeah.
I mean, that would, I assume, take a new appraisal, and the factors on the appraisal would be completely different.
In the future, yeah.
Right.
Whoever that future use is, right.
But then that, again, we could have another issue with another business moving in and them absorbing the costs, right? They would be the applicant yet again. Because this is one of my concerns. I'm looking at how much you're putting forward for improvements. It's significant, right? And then the fees that we're asking for, that benefit, yes, it will benefit your business, but that's a long-term benefit for that property owner, right? And I'm trying to figure out here how to balance those things. Because for me, that's something that goes with the property, right? That makes that property that much more attractive. That makes it desirable for businesses to be in there. It can probably allow them to charge a certain kind of rent. And, you know, so that's where I'm kind of wondering, while I want, you know, I would love to have the Broken Rack there. I think it's a great spot for it. I also think that the property owner is getting a great deal. What a wonderful thing to have the city be your neighbor behind you and maintain the property behind you, right? And give you access to public space. So, I mean, we could hear from other council members or also from the public.
Well, let's hear from the rest of the public, and then let's have a discussion.
I just want to make one quick point. I'm not sure if this is on point, but at this point, to the building owner, it really doesn't matter whether you grant, whether we get access or not, because the terms of the lease are set.
Right. It's negotiated already.
It's negotiated already. So we agree it wouldn't be fair for us to pay $50,000. That's why we're asking you to waive the fee. If you waive the fee, then we end up paying the $17,000 we've already paid for those costs. So just to...
Yeah. Ken?
I would certainly support waiving the fee. But I really question, you know, the idea of even granting access or not. Why wouldn't you consider another street or another sidewalk? I mean, suppose somebody didn't pay the fee, so you wouldn't have access there? This doesn't make any sense to me. And then an appraisal process? How do you evaluate whether it's more valuable to them or to us? I think that's a tough one there. This doesn't even make any sense. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
I definitely agree that they should be able to use the space. Maybe if you could make the café, which sits out on the public space, be for just the business. And if the business is ever sold or closed, that permit for that business to use that space is gone. And then it would have to go back to the city for whoever the new tenant would be. And my business is right on the northern section, the part that's uncompleted right now. I'm waiting for it to be done. I talked to Maurice before the meeting, and I just want Godspeed for the greenway to be built
Yeah.
in entirety or in parts, because it will be significant for the city, and especially my business from where we are every day.
What's your business?
You at Honor Bar?
No, I'm in Ron Silverman's building, right next to... My parking is right next to the spot where the dirt just went in.
Is that the monthly building?
Yeah, it used to be the monthly building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm right next to the monthly. I have all the space between the monthly and about 10,000 square feet right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Further comment, questions in council?
Mayor Asher?
Nora?
I think you all have a wonderful concept, and I believe the city, I think you're going to be a catalyst in that section of the greenway, and that you'll bring more to the city than a $50,000 fee will bring. So I absolutely am in favor of a waiver, especially since Charlie has figured out a very clever way. If you guys leave, then the permission leaves, and whoever would come in again is going to have to face the same thing. But for right now, I truly believe you'll be a catalyst and bring much more to the city than the $50,000 bucks would. So I would move that we have waived the fee of the $50,000, because Charlie has solved the problem that you and I are really worried about, Jack, and that is that this would be in perpetuity. Now it's limited to the actions of the Broken Rack, and they understand that the sidewalk café ordinance means, or the sidewalk café rules, mean that you have to maintain the space. There doesn't, can't be any police activity, you know, on and on and on. We have control here, and I think this is an opportunity for a council that has many times spoken up in favor of small business. Here's mom and pop. They're here asking for a break, and this is a way for us to do it.
No, I agree. I think this makes...
Got a second?
It's a second.
Thank you.
I think it makes a lot of sense, and I can't wait till you open up. But I also think it's also important that we don't... We are waiving it, but yet we aren't waiving it, because there's going to be other activity on the greenway that
Absolutely.
we might not want to waive. So this gives us a good way. Thank you, Charlie, for figuring that one out.
Jennifer, do you have anything?
Thank you for being in Emeryville.
I have some questions.
Yes.
I agree with the sentiments that were expressed earlier by both Kurt and Jack about that I think the long-term benefits are really to the property owner more than to the tenant. And I'm just concerned with the way perhaps we constructed this access fee, that it doesn't, it's not paid on an ongoing basis by a property owner. And I'm concerned of, you know, why is it that we're negotiating this with the use rather than the property, since it seems like the access is really more associated with the property? Can you, yeah, can you answer that?
Well, I mean, a conditional use permit can be applied for by a tenant or a property owner. So it's kind of up to them to sort that out. And typically, if a property owner is required to pay some fee or make some improvement, they usually pass the cost of that along to their tenant anyway. So it kind of is, you know, that's sort of between them. It's kind of moot for us as to who actually applies for it. I would point out that the whole rationale for this code section in the first place was to bring a little equity to the fact that there were some major property developers that paid for the construction of the greenway. And it was mostly Pulte Homes in the area north of Powell Street. They paid for, I think, four different sections of the greenway through four different projects. And there's other properties that front on the greenway that haven't paid anything for construction of the greenway. And so the idea was to try to get something back from those people for, if they should want access to the greenway, they should have to pay something for it. And Pulte's contribution was a one-time thing.
Okay.
It was, you know, one time, we built the greenway, and it's there, and we're done.
Right. They don't maintain it, for example. We do that.
Right. So the concept was that anybody else who comes along and wants access has to proportionally pay a one-time thing, just like the original builders did. And you don't just collect it every year. You just get it once, and then you're done.
But a builder presumably built a building and then got quite a significant
Benefit.
Benefit from that, and in the cost or selling the business or the building, or by renting it. To me, someone with, you know, an entertainment establishment, it's like, it's little by little. It's not all at one time. It's not a huge investment. Well, it sounds like there's quite an investment at this point, but that $50,000, if you could stretch that over, and I don't know what time period exactly, there's a sense of that access continually contributing to the business in a way that's a little bit different to me than building a building.
Yes, it's true. But I mean, one could also, you can draw an analogy with the two restaurants that are along the greenway just across the street. On the northwest corner of Powell and Hollis, you have the, I forget what it's called, Café 22.
E22.
And E22, and then the Bureau 510. Neither of those paid an access fee to the greenway because those projects built the greenway.
Uh-huh.
The Emery, Elevation 22, that the E22 café is in, built that part of the greenway, and the greenway was then expanded, and the plaza was built by Wareham when they built the Emery Station Greenway Building. Those two restaurants are tenants of those buildings. They don't have to pay an access fee, because their landlords basically built that part of the greenway, so...
But it costs a lot more than $50,000, and they get a big benefit from having it there.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, there's no perfect solution.
Right.
We're just trying to bring a little bit of equity here.
Right. And then, another question is, you mentioned that there are really three permits, and that the sidewalk café permit is one. And I think staff told me that it was about $100 to apply for a sidewalk café.
Yeah, it's real cheap.
Yeah.
The intent is to encourage sidewalk cafés.
Great. And how often is that renewed, or...
Every year.
Annually? Okay. And the conditions that you mentioned are written into the sidewalk café permit, or that's written into the minor CUP access to the greenway?
No, it's for the minor CUP for the access to the greenway. And what it actually says is, it says that in approving a conditional use permit for access, da-da-da-da-da, conditions, such conditions may be designated as deemed necessary to protect the public health, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, the following. And then it lists some examples of... And then it lists some examples of the kinds of conditions you might put on such a permit. So it doesn't say you have to, but these are in the code as things you might include. And one is restricting the uses that may gain access from the city park, greenway, or other property. So we could restrict this particular use permit to this particular use. Then when this use goes away, that access is not approved anymore.
Can you restrict it even to an entity or just to the use itself? I mean, we've seen, you know, Kitties and Prizefighter are very different, I think, under the same use but different establishments.
That I'm not clear on. It's typically, generally speaking, a use is a use.
Okay.
A use is how it's categorized. And if, for example, the use permit that was granted by the Planning Commission for the Broken Rack, if the Broken Rack should go out of business, God forbid, or decide to sell to some other entity, and they change the name to something else, but they run their operation exactly the same way, then it's the same use.
Okay.
If they want to make changes to it, I mean, even if it's the same use classification, the use permit also includes a site plan that shows exactly where the, how the layout is. So it might require a modification of the use permit if they're going to change anything. But typically, I don't know, in this case, if we could restrict it to a particular business, but normally it's to the use, as defined in the code. And the city attorney is nodding his head.
Okay. Okay. Another, so this access fee is in perpetuity. There's no period of time at which it would be reconsidered?
Right.
Except for this change of use.
Except if the use goes away, then if we put this condition on there, then the access would go away.
Okay. I think, and in the map that you showed us, the Sidewalk Cafe area is all public right-of-way?
Sorry.
Because I don't know where the property line is, but I assume it's at the building?
Well, yes, technically, yes, it's right here. It's technically not public right-of-way. It's city-owned property. In fact, if it were public right-of-way, they wouldn't need a permit to access it, because you can always have access on a public right-of-way. You don't need special permission for that. But you do need special permission if it's city property that's not a public right-of-way. So it's a legal nuance.
Okay. But we treat it as public right-of-way. We treat it as a park.
Well, the Sidewalk Cafe provisions apply both to public rights-of-way and to city greenways and parks.
Uh-huh.
So.
Okay. And a question maybe for the applicant is, will there be alcohol served in this area outside? Or can alcohol go out the door? I don't know.
It could, under the Sidewalk Cafe provisions.
Right. If you're serving alcohol, there's a requirement that you have a barrier around the area where you're serving that's at least 38 inches or something high. And those, also those barriers have to be movable so that when we are not open for business, we have to move the, we will have to move the barriers back so that the public then, again, has access to the high hole area. And we have to move the barriers back, but we have to leave our furnishings out so that the public can use those furnishings at any time they want.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you for that. Do you, you mentioned that, you know, you have the cost of tenant improvements and the seismic retrofit and this access fee as well. I'm just curious, you know, I think it said in the appraisal that the property itself was like $1.5 million perhaps a year ago. I think it was purchased, you know, which $50,000 kind of pales in comparison. But I'm, you know, without, just for ballpark figures, how much are you spending on the tenant improvements, or what portion of that would be considered in this access fee? Is it?
The whole deal together is going to be, we're getting up to the $600,000 range for this whole project. Soft costs, construction costs, and miscellaneous costs. So that's.
It's pretty significant, it sounds like. Okay, with that, I guess I'm certainly in favor of significantly reducing. I recognize the $17,000 with the cost of the appraisal and the $13,500 for the improvements. I guess I have kind of on principle the idea and precedent that we could charge a nominal token access fee, just because I think it's important to recognize the significant benefits to both the property and to the business by having a public access. So I guess I'll put in place just a substitute motion that we reduce the additional fee to $1,000.
I'd second that and call the question.
And if we could include that condition of tying it to the use as well?
We'll be sure to include that in the minor conditional use permit conditions.
And I also just want to recognize the $17,000 contribution as offsetting basically that access fee. That what, when I say $1,000, it's really, I think, added together $18,000, just in terms of the cost.
Call a question.
She's, I think she's getting ready to.
Councilmember Brinkman?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Atkins is excused, and Mayor Asher?
Aye.
Thank you. Look forward to having.
We'll see you at the Broken Rack and on the greenway.
We'll be there at the open.
Yeah.
An honor bar someday.
It's right there.
We'd be really happy to have there.
Oh, it's so nice to think of that. Yes, no? Okay, 8.5, the Transportation Committee report.
Before you tonight are three items for approval, may I suggest that you pull 8.5.1 and keep it for the next Transportation Committee meeting? When I went out to survey the businesses as the committee had requested, I realized that this was not a red zone that was being removed and being changed. It was actually a zone that we created for Kitties that restricted parking during Kitties' normal hours of operation, 8:00, 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and that it is open parking the rest of the hours, instead of just a red zone that would be removed and replaced with a green zone. So I, with that information, I would suggest that it be brought back to the Transportation Committee for further action.
Okay.
The other action tonight is approve placing a blue disabled zone in front of 3609 Adeline Street. The committee received the application, the notices were made of the, as per our blue zone procedures, and there was no objections that came from it, and the committee is recommending approval of the zone.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then the last item is, the committee has agreed to cancel the Christmas Eve Day meeting of the Transportation Committee, Transportation Committee on 24th.
I bet Nora's going to vote no on this one.
Move approval.
Who did it, the Transportation?
She did?
I assume all other committees are meeting though that week, right?
Every committee's meeting except for this one.
Nora's letting us go.
Nora got solved. Oh, my gosh.
Yes, she did.
Why is it the council weighs in on that anyway? That's what I want to know. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We need one.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now on to